I'd like to call a word of this media, the Ohio State Local School Board. Do you have a roll call please?
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Digby?
Here.
Mr. Neal?
Here.
Mr. Toles?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Go join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and visible for the reading justice for all.
I will receive a copy of the minutes. I will go ahead and move approval of the minutes.
One second.
Roll call please.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Digby?
Yes.
Ms. Gail?
Yes.
Mr. Toles?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes. Don't believe we have any adjustments to be made.
Then I will go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as submitted. Roll call please.
Mr. Hunter?
Yes.
Ms. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Toles?
Yes.
Mr. Digby?
Yeah.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes, Mr. Koch.
First off, I'd like to, I put a certificate out there from the Ohio School Boards Association. And I just want to take a moment to, on behalf of all the administration and the entire staff here, thank each and every one of you for your support and dedication to this community. What you guys and the leadership that you guys have shown this year especially has been phenomenal in supporting our entire students and staff to get back to in-school learning and everything that comes along with that is definitely noted and we appreciate that. So from the bottom of our hearts, we just thank you for the continuous support and leadership that you guys have for this community. What I like to do is I always like to remind that Jamie is the old guy in the group, but...
Shows doesn't.
Yeah, but I want, you know, Jamie's been, first got elected in January of 2000, so in November of 2000, or 1999, but started in 2000, so 21 years. Brad and Mark have been on since 2010, so 11 years already. And then Gordon was re-elected in 20, but first appointed in 2019, so he's two years in. And then Jessica is in her first year. So I really appreciate your guys' leadership and your longstanding tradition of creating a great school here. So just, I don't know, anything else Steve you want to add, I mean, from the treasurer's side?
No, you guys, and I don't want to speak for him also, but you guys have given two young guys a great opportunity and I personally appreciate it very much, so I've enjoyed working with you guys very much, thank you.
Absolutely. Anybody else want to say anything nice about me?
Other than I laugh, you aren't that young. That used to work, it doesn't...
I appreciate that, Adam and Steve, we certainly don't do this for the...
We do it for the fun.
So, alright, well, that's, again, thank you very much for getting us back to school here and everything you've done for us over the years, we really appreciate it. Next up is Students of the Month, so I'll start with John.
So I have, I have, our first sixth grade female student of the month is Gracie Zigray. Some of the students or teacher comments are, "Gracie is extremely respectful of her teachers and peers. She is assertive and asking questions and her efforts in class are reflective of her hard work ethic." Noah says, "Gracie may be the quietest student that she's ever helped, but she is laser-focused, puts forth her best effort in everything she does. And even though I can't see her whole face, her eyes tell me she is a happy, smiley kid. And what Gracie does is the absolute truth, you can always tell when Gracie's smiling because that mask is up and she's got a, I'm sure underneath that mask somewhere, she's got a huge infectious smile, we'll get to see soon." Sixth grade male student of the month, Jack is a wonderful, Jack Hartman, I'm sorry, Jack is a wonderful to have in class, he works hard on each assignment, studies the material, gives him participates in class discussion, he gets along well with others. Jack is super polite and willing to help his classmates when needed, always prepared, cares about the quality of his work, and I can tell you, Jack is really, really quiet guy. He's starting to come out of his shell, lunchtime and stuff, we banter back and forth about Ohio State and Michigan and all those kind of things, and he's really coming out of his shell, really big kid. Aubrey Zawiski, seventh grade female student of the month, quiet and a thoughtful young lady. She's respectful and always says hello. She is artistic and enjoys writing and drawing. Another teacher says that she is increasingly becoming way better with organization, her assignments have been completely timely, her test scores and her performance in classes is phenomenal. Seventh grade male student of the month, Aaron Henderson. Aaron is not afraid to ask questions in class, which shows he cares about his studies. He participates in class discussions and offers good insight into what is being studied. He's been a great addition to our class this year. Aaron is a hard worker, learns from his mistakes, improves on tests and quizzes, his participation in class is more thoughtful. Aaron is a platon, thoughtful young man. He has shown that he values his friends and does a great job with his schoolwork. He participates in class and turns assignments in timely. Eighth grade female student of the month is Kirsten Lurk. Kirsten is always looking to put her best foot forward in all she does. Her studies are very important to her and she constantly strives for the best in everything. It is also clear that she loves her horses and loves talking about them when she gets the chance. Another teacher says that she is always kind, thoughtful, positive and respectful. Another teacher, Kirsten is a sweet young lady who is very hardworking and values her schoolwork. She is not afraid to ask questions or go above and beyond to get a good grade. She loves her horses and her animals. Eighth grade male student of the month is Thad Timko. Thad is an extremely bright student, not only is he wanting to learn as much as he can, but he's also wanting to help where he can as well. He's one of the most respectful students I've ever taught and he's always coming to class with a glowing smile. Thad's smile enters the room before he does, another teacher says. Thad is always willing to participate in class and help out. Another teacher, Thad is a bright young man, he likes learning and participates in class. He has a good sense of humor and is respectful of his classmates and teachers. He has an awesome smile. So those are the junior high January Students of the Month.
That's a lot of reading, John, good work.
I've been a pro in those reading skills.
High school Students of the Month, really, really awesome group this month. I'll start with our freshman Evelyn Ryder. Evelyn's a really nice young lady, doing a great job. Mrs., let me see here, Mrs. Neasley said that Evelyn's a hard worker who is fantastic to have in class. She is a go-getter, willing to put in extra effort and work for everything. She volunteers to help others out with projects. She's positive and hardworking. Mr. Hapner said that she is one of the hardest working freshman students in my math class. Also has been wonderful to have Evelyn in class because she is very personable and mature. And Mrs. Lockhart said that Evelyn is a pleasure to have in class, she's always willing to participate and help others. She's a hard worker, always prepared, and congratulations Evelyn. Sophomore Student of the Month is Chesney Kiran. Mr. Furlong said that Chesney is a delight to have in class, she's an active participant in class discussions. She works well with peers and has a strong work ethic, and he is appreciative of a positive attitude that she brings to class every day. Mr. Hapner said that Chesney is a pleasure to have in class, she's polite, considerate, always prepared and always willing to assist and share her knowledge, and she's a terrific young lady. Our Junior Student of the Month is Nathan Snyder. Mr. Gerwah has on here that Nate is a positive young man and always prepared for class. Mrs. Danko said that Nate is quite a nice young man, works hard and helps others, she's very appreciative of his effort. And then finally, Jade Wheeler, our Senior Student of the Month. Mrs. Danko said that Jade is an outstanding student, she's conscientious and diligent, and I love how much she loves to learn about so many things. She's quite a thinker and a delight to have in class. And Mrs. Krepp said that Jade is an excellent all-around student. More importantly, she's very nice, sincere and polite, and a polite individual. She's been a pleasure to have in class. So that's the four Students of the Month for the high school. Congratulations to Jade, Nate, Chesney and Evelyn.
Thank you. Next up, I'm going to turn it over to start the day with Mr. Furtick. Going to talk a little bit about the high school football team and their accomplishments, and then we'll hear from the staff and the captains.
For the record, all former Students of the Month also sitting here, you can see now they've all held the title at one point in time.
Certainly a great group of kids here, so we've asked them to come in and just honor them as team captains along with our head coach Matt Gerwah for their accomplishments this season. Won first league title since 2005, first outright title since 1993. And then into the final four we went. So it's been a great run, and from the bottom of my heart, I thank you guys for all your efforts this year. You've been a phenomenal group to coach as a senior class. Great leadership, helps that you guys are all bright, intelligent individuals in the classroom. Makes it much easier for us to coach kids like that. But you also put in a lot of work to get here, and it didn't just start, you know, this past summer, it started four years ago. So that work paid off for you guys in the long run, you've left your mark for teams to come. Personally, from the bottom of my heart, COVID's been a pretty stressful time in terms of, you know, navigating through social distancing and social events. And these guys have practiced and their games repent my release, so thank you guys from the bottom of my heart. Coach Gerwah, thank you for all the time that you prepped with the football team, us as coaches. I know it takes a lot of time from family, so greatly appreciated. So we have our coach, Matt Gerwah.
Thanks, thanks sir.
Noah Gerwah.
Thanks sir.
Michael Gonzalez.
Thanks sir.
Kate Lyons.
Thank you.
So this time, if you guys had any questions or want to give them a round of applause?
I'd like to say something. I think that starting back in June, it was, you know, or even May or June or whatever it was, we had no idea we were going to play whatsoever. And I think, you know, Tom and I talked that maybe if we got one game, even Adam, we got one game in, we'd be ecstatic. That's why we had senior night the first night. You know, who knows if it would have ended or not, but, you know, I want to, I mean, I want to give a lot of credit to Adam, Kevin and Tom, especially Tom, you know, for everything they did to make, to let these kids play, you know. It was, you know, we never thought it would turn out like it did, you know, with these kids and, you know, the season that we did and having the community involved and, you know, Luke saying, hey, you know, 2,500 people watched one of the games or whatever it was, that's crazy. I mean, week in and week out, you know, trying to tell these kids how much they, you know, affected everybody in the community and the positive attitudes they had in school, on the field. And I think it helped the community too, gave them a release, an outlet, maybe on Friday night to watch the game. You know, unfortunately couldn't have been, be there, but, you know, I think it was a great thing for everybody involved, it really was. You know, I give a lot of credit to these guys, being beyond mature in handling the situation and everything that Mr. Furtick told them to do in order that we get on the field and play. And it wasn't just about winning and all that kind of stuff, but the experience that they had this year, you know, they'll never forget it, but, you know, I give a lot of credit to them and the administration too for letting us play, because it was, it was a lot of fun and, you know, some of these guys won't forget, and the community won't forget, which was great. So I think everybody involved, community, players, coaches, administration, you know, it was fantastic. You know, in these crazy times, it was a great release for everybody, which was, which was, which was fun to see, so. But I thank those guys and thank you guys for all your support, especially Jamie. You know, he's, he's supported us, you know, for, ever since I've been here, so, which is, but, even when Dan was here, he was always on the field after the games, first one out there. Win or lose, Jamie was always, always, always there, so, which was, which was always nice to see. But yeah, thank you, thanks to everybody, so we really appreciate it.
I wanted to add to Matt, you know, when you talked about the maturity of these guys, you know, we have Aaron in here, we have these three seniors. I can tell you just from the high school principal's perspective, this has been a really hard year, and I think our senior class has really stepped up. Their leadership and maturity has been phenomenal. I think they've really carried us through this year, to be honest with you. They've set the tone in the high school about expectations for behavior. They have held on to, we want to do things here, and so in order to do that, this is what needs to be done, and the younger kids follow their lead. I mean, Tom and I, we've had very few issues in the building. Just because I feel like this senior class has really been dialed in, they've been exceptional leaders, great role models, I think they want everything they can get out of this year possibly. Of course, it's still school to a lot of them and they have their complaints too, but they've been phenomenal. The football thing was a lot of fun, certainly gave us something to cheer on in the fall, but it really does extend to, I think, the senior class in general, our staff's been phenomenal with them too, and I just, I really am very appreciative of the leadership. And I think it's meant a lot to them, you know, these younger kids are kind of dealing with it and going through it, and certainly is affecting them. But it's been very real to these guys, understanding what's on the line and their kind of last opportunity to enjoy some of the stuff that we do here. They've just been awesome, so I just want to give them a shout out to that senior class, they really have been exceptional.
So one of the things that Matt and Tom and I shared at the board meeting after, you know, we had the unfortunate loss in the state semifinal was, you know, I've always said as a board member, I'm human, we like to win, but I think in high school athletics, junior high athletics, it's more important about what the teachers do now. And I went to quite a few of the games, I think maybe missed three total. And especially when you guys are in the state playoff run and you're going up against some teams that were storied programs, that have been there, you know, were football car rentals. What impressed me the most was we won with dignity and we won with class. Even in our, in our loss in that state semifinal game, you guys showed dignity and you showed class. Unfortunately, I can see that on the other side of you, in that game and some of your other games. That made me, as a board member, more proud than the fact that we made it that far into the playoffs. Tells me that as coaches and as a staff and as administration, we're teaching our young student athletes the right things, to win, but to win with class, to win with dignity, to do it in a manner that we can all be proud of. And I think at the end, that speaks more about than the fact that we were, you know, made it all the way to the state semifinal.
Thank you.
You know, not to put you captains on the spot at all, but you guys want to say anything about the year or anything?
Well, I think I can speak for both of these guys too. We just want to give everyone a thank you, the community, you guys, I mean, this being our last football season here, I mean, we were really hoping to make it special. I mean, even with COVID and all that, I mean, the community just rallied around us and we were able to have a pretty fun season, you know.
Yeah, I mean, ever since you're kids, you always dreamed of going to the state championship and winning the state championship, and obviously, you know, it didn't end the way we wanted it to, but going back to summer, I didn't even think we were going to have a season, so. I want to thank you guys for everything that you do behind the scenes, you know, it kind of gets overlooked most of the time, but without you guys, it wouldn't have been possible. And, you know, even though it didn't end the way we wanted it to, I'm still never going to forget this, and it was one of the greatest accomplishments that I've ever had, so, even though I'm still pretty young, but thank you guys.
Football means a lot to most of us, or all of us, and we've been playing since like fourth grade together. And, you know, with not knowing if we were going to be able to play or not, it kind of just broke all of us, but being able to play and going out like we did, it was, it was great. But yeah, thank you everybody and thank you to the community for getting behind us and supporting us and making the tough decisions that you guys had to make for us to be able to play.
I just want to say that one of the most rewarding things about this season is not only beating Eastwood once, but beating him twice, twice in the same year. Matt, you deserve a raise.
Fuck that, fuck that.
As somebody who's watched upstate football since I was a little kid, you know, this year was just amazing. What you guys did, you know, what you overcame, how you, you know, if you didn't play, to get kids to come out in that situation, to believe, to put in the effort, the time and the months before the season started, to keep, as you guys as seniors and as captains of the team, to keep the team together, you know, to have the limited number of COVID issues we had, you know. You know, we say that what there's between a really good team and a great team is the leadership they have. And I think, you know, looking at these guys in front of us, I can see why we did so well this year, so congratulations guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations guys. I, what you guys did was remarkable and you guys are class acts, great student athletes. First and foremost, you're great students in the classroom and it extended on the football field, so. We're all proud of you, a lot of team accomplishments, a lot of individual accomplishments, but the individual accomplishments wouldn't have happened if you guys didn't buy in as a team and as a program and as a family, and that's, that's what I love to see, how you guys banded together and did it together, so. Congratulations again on league champs and state final four.
Thank you, Adam, but Tom kind of hit the nail on the head though. I didn't think about this until, you know, you were back here again, but the fall was pretty stressful. There was, there was a lot going on, but Friday nights, man, we felt like kids again, like we were, we enjoyed it. It was a lot of fun being on that journey with you a little bit and being able to watch that. It was, definitely took us away from some of the stresses of what was going on around here.
Jamie, Brad and I and Kevin were, we pretty much watched the games right together and it was, we were not more members and superintendents and principals, we were fans and we were, I mean, I hit Brad's arm, every time you guys could do something good, I'd...
We had to hold Brad back because the officiating told me...
That's, that's part of it too.
There were a couple of times, I thought Adam was going to fall over the top of the press box.
So we were, we were definitely on your guys' side and cheering loud for you, so. You guys are happy to stay, but I'm sure you guys want to get home and be a, be a family, so if you guys want to... Congratulations.
Maybe I just won't come. It's like, you can say...
Thank you everybody.
So my superintendent's update is going to be relatively brief today, but I did give you guys a copy of the latest COVID numbers. I really don't want to jinx it, but I can tell you that we are ecstatic on where we are with everything. We have zero employees quarantined, we only have 12 students quarantined and one employee isolated at the moment as we stand today. I did not update these for tomorrow yet, I either do that at the end of the day or at the beginning of the day, but I think we get one or two kids back tomorrow as well, and we're monitoring a few kids, but not a lot. I mean, again, I don't want to repeat my single spiel, but what we're doing here seems to be working and we're really appreciative of the students, staff and the entire community at large for doing the right thing and doing everything they can to, to stay safe and kind of, kind of slow the spread. So we're not, you know, we changed the quarantine rules for K through, for pre-K through five. If you identify, if you're in three to six feet, they can still come to school, not participate recess in some, in some physical activity like gym class or anything, but for the most part, those numbers are virtually zero now as well, but we did have a few of those early on when we got back, but overall, I mean, to only have, I mean, we're back to August numbers right now. And if you, if, if you looked at, you know, kind of the trend that we, that I shared with you in December of two weeks after Labor Day, two weeks after Halloween, two weeks after Thanksgiving, we really thought, you know, not my wildest dreams did I think we, we only have, we have 12 quarantine right now, so. Just again, hats off to our students, staff and community for everything in that regard. Vaccine update, I shared with you guys those emails yesterday that I shared with staff and then later on in the community. We are collaborating with the entire county and then the health department on this. We hope, knock on wood, we hope that we're going to get news tomorrow on when we will receive, what week we'll receive our doses. And then when we do, it's going to be a collective effort with the whole county. We're going to have three sites in the county for school personnel, BG, Perrysburg and Penta. And then our site that we will be at is in Bowling Green. So all of our staff will go to Bowling Green, we'll have time slots and we will be, have a virtual day that day. So we will be prepared to give virtual lessons and assignments in that regard on that Friday, and then three weeks or four weeks, depending if we get Moderna or Pfizer, we'll have another day. You know, just with, with the potential for side effects and things like that, Friday makes the most sense to pool all of our resources throughout the county with vaccinators and support staff to help monitor and registration and all that. We feel in Wood County that we're ready. We feel that we can do this, just let us know when our doses are coming. Those that want it are ready. I'm really, you know, optimistic that things will go really well. Several community members volunteered to sign up for the Wood County Medical Reserve Corps, which is like nurses and EMTs in the area can, you know, basically sign up to be vaccinators under Wood County's umbrella. So we have, we have the help that we need to get this done. We got about 3,000 in the county with all school employees, so. Again, our optimistic date is the 12th, and if it's not, then it'll be either the 19th or the 26th, but the doses are starting next week is week one, and we're hoping that we get week two, but we never know. So that's, you know, we have about 75% of the staff said they would be, they'd like to get it. About 12% said maybe and 12% said no, so, you know, whatever makes it that work, but. So we'll go from there and I think, I actually think my wife is going to vaccinate me. She signed up for the medical...
She's been waiting for that.
Yeah, she's been waiting for that, yeah, she, she signed up for the...
Oh, this won't hurt.
Yeah, she's an RN, so she signed up for the medical reserve corps and wants to help out the staff and do that, so that's if, if she can get the day off of work since it's on a Friday, but. So yeah, I think...
I want to go right after you.
What's that?
I want to go right after you because I want to see that.
Any questions in regards to COVID or the vaccine or anything?
Keep up the good work.
Alright.
Sing no visitors, there will be no visitor comments.
So I've got a few things for you. I gave you this sheet with the agenda. We did get our income tax payment yesterday. It was $107,000 lower than last year, so we anticipated it's going to be lower, it's a touch lower than we thought. Up in the green, you can see we forecasted 676 is what the payment would be, it ended up being 644. Part of that, so last year in FY '20, you can see the payment is much higher than FY '19 all the previous years, so Adam, I think there's a lot of reason behind that, bonuses are given out, the economy's really good that year, so. We're still on pace to where we're above the 19, 18, 17 numbers now, but obviously with our last payment of the year going to be in April, hopefully that's higher than 671 for forecasting, so. We did receive exactly what we're going to give for our CARES Act money, we're going to receive $583,000, so we don't have access to it yet. Looking like end of February is when the process will get started, so we should, I mean, everything looks like right now we'll be able to spend a lot of it this year, so that's the goal, try to use it up this year the best we can. We also received information that we're going to be, we're going to receive about 47% of the reduction back from our foundation money, so this won't start until February, and I won't have actual numbers until we get our, our February settlement, but it looks about like $140,000 back we'll receive from the, probably we receive from the state, so. Obviously great news. I put in here, so that's been my financial fork or my packet here. I've got some of the notes for you that the Spanish Club Fund that we made, they presented last spring and they're going to start saving money for a future field trip, so this allows us to keep their money separate. The appropriation changes, we do this with grants as they can change by, by a dollar and we have to reappropriate how much money you guys allow us to spend, so as they change those, we need to bring them back to you to reappropriate. And the other issue is the preschool and extended care billing, so I put this in, it's exhibit, it's exhibit three in there. So the change we made last year where people would have a credit card on file and if they got behind, you know, we would run their card, well, I still feel obligated to call them and then sometimes they don't come back, sometimes it just takes a long time. So I would like to recommend that starting next year, we go to an automatic payment system, just like you would, with your cell phone, just like you would with your internet or any other service. Your credit card is on file and you know it gets run on this day, it could be a debit card, it could be a credit card, but there's something on file that we run. Becky Hatfield would like to run it for extended care every other week when their payments are due, so she does the billing every other Friday, so that would keep their bills from getting too high. But just every other Friday, the customer will receive an invoice in their email. Within 20 seconds it takes to run their card, they'll receive a receipt that it was run and then they'll have a statement that shows that their balance is clear again. This would just, it just keeps us from having to chase down people that owe money, basically. And we do the same thing with preschool, we would just bill them. And we do the same thing with preschool, we would just bill monthly. So same thing, they'll get a invoice, they'll get a receipt. All they'll probably admit or so they'll have a statement that just shows how much money is left on there for the year form. So and the reason I'd be missing out, we haven't made the handbooks yet, but we're starting to send out preschool registration paperwork. And I want to put this in there so that way there's no surprises when parents sign up that they know how we bill. So I'd like to recommend that we change to, to that type of billing. Is there any, anything in the packet I can address for you? So we talked about the appropriations, the new fund, the recommendation for preschool billing. We need to approve the annual membership dues for Boazville for, for this year and improve FLA and our donations for the month.
I will move that we approve the treasurer's financial report and recommendations of consent items. Is there any discussion? Give a roll call, please.
Mr. Harder?
Yes.
Mrs. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Toles?
Yes.
Mr. Digby?
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Superintendent recommendations for the month. Light month in regards to employees, just a couple wrestling changes. I have music tutor, they were hired back. And then the spring coaches for the upcoming season there. And then two substitutes in Sadie and Anne. And Anne has been an employee before, she just took a little break from seven. And then Paula Van Horn for a long-term sub. She's gonna fill in for a preschool teacher later on in the year. So those are the employment changes. B is to the Wood County Service Agreement. That's an annual resolution that we have. Just letting the Wood County ESC know of the services that we're gonna purchase through them next year. Nothing changes there. We are gonna continue the same services next year and the same that we have for, for the last several years. C is the College Credit Plus Agreement with Owens. It's about the sixth year we've done College Credit Plus, assuming. No, nevermind, I was gonna make a Brad joke, but it. It's, it's going well. We have a big participation with, with, with College Credit Plus and Owens, Toledo and Bowling Green.
I'm not allowed to make fun of them anymore.
Yeah, basically. And I, the, the actual agenda doesn't have D on that. The one you guys are looking at on paper is there, but that's not on there. That wasn't on the final agenda though, so.
So I will move that we approve your superintendent's recommendations, A through C as an consent item. Is there any discussion?
One quick question on the ESC contract.
Yep.
B says alternative learning center services. Is that what goes on at the juvenile center?
Yep.
So if we have any things that happen to get incarcerated in juvenile center, we have to find a different way to pay? Because we're not taking that service.
No, that is, that is separate. That is, hold on, let me get it up, let me pull it up here. Which one are you looking at?
Exhibit A, B.
Okay, so alternative learning center is, we in the past, we, several years ago, we made this change. Several years, we would, if kids were more of a behavior issue that just weren't following our rules in school, there was a, there's a county, there's a county group at a, it's at a church in Bowling Green. You remember, you know what we're talking about? Can you explain that a little bit better, Mr. O'Shea? ALC, we don't use ALC anymore. We keep those kids here. It's, it's credit efficient stuff and we, we use our, our online classes for that, so.
Sure, let me make sure.
Yep, I, I, we do do, there's JDC and then JRC, so juvenile attention and then residential.
They're not through the ESC.
They're not through the ESC. I thought that's what you were, but yeah, ALC, we actually use that. And then we decided to do things on our own a little bit differently to save money. And, and it's really working out.
Because we're in, I think we're in year three or four without.
Three or four.
Using it at ALC.
And we were spending.
Lots of money.
At one point, we had four or five kids over there and it was, it was expensive.
So.
Any further discussion? Give a roll call, please.
Mr. Harder?
Yes.
Mrs. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Toles?
Yes.
Mr. Digby?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
I will now move approval of item B.
No, we don't, we don't need that. I have to turn it off.
Don't believe we have any old business, do we have any new business? We do need to enter into executive session this evening.
We will be going to executive session for discussing and former personnel.
Give a roll call, please.
Mr. Toles?
Yes.
Mr. Digby?
Yes.
Mr. Harder?
Yes.
Mrs. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. We will be taking no action after.
We're back from executive session. We'll be taking no action. I'll entertain motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
Stephen.
A second.
Are you on?
No, I just took a five.